Good evening and welcome to the City Council meeting of Tuesday, June 12th, 2018. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All council members are present except Mayor Rayum, who is absent and excused. Okay, so, meeting agenda approval. Did everyone receive the update from staff on the meeting minutes? Anyone want to pull anything from the consent agenda?
Yes, I'd like to pull AB 18-100.
All right. Any changes to the projected agenda? And now we'll review the public engagement opportunities. Well, join us for the Fourth of July celebration tomorrow, beginning at 8:30 a.m. with a pancake breakfast at Fire Station 42, followed by a children's parade at 11:15 and the grand parade at noon. The city is seeking pro and con committee members to write statements for Proposition One, the public safety levy lid lift, and Proposition Two, capital bond fire station reconstruction. The pro-con statements will appear in the voter pamphlet statements for the November 6th general election. Please submit a letter of interest to the city clerk by July 9th. Council will appoint members to the pro-con committees on July 17th. And our first music in the park of the summer is Friday, July 6th, at North Creek Sportsfield Number Three, and will run, the music in the park series will run through August 24th. And now we have some special presentations, so I'll come down and read them, once I find Okay, is Brooke Knight here? So whereas, in the words of former President Dwight D. Eisenhower, "Of all the days in the year, the primary one to us is..." Oh, that's not it, even though it's... Is that it? This says, this is about the Fourth of July celebration. Why? Okay. I'm not meeting the, figuring out the connection. Okay. In the words of former President Dwight D. Eisenhower, "Of all the days in the year, the primary one to us as a nation is the Fourth of July, the anniversary of the signing of our Declaration of Independence. And whereas this year our great nation is 242 years old, and whereas the city of Bothell honors families, friends, apple pie, and our country on this special day with a pancake breakfast, children's parade, and a grand parade, and whereas on this day Bothell showcases a red, white, and blue celebration of patriotism emphasizing love of country and the very best of American values. Now therefore I, Davina Dewar, Deputy Mayor of the city of Bothell, do hereby proclaim a wonderful and safe celebration of our nation by Bothelites and all Americans on July 4th." Brooke is from the North Shore Senior Center. Would you like to say anything?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Thank you so much. We are really proud to have two of our members as the grand co-marchals of the parade tomorrow. Lloyd has, is 97 years old and volunteers with us almost every day of the week, and Maggie is 103 years old and volunteers with us three days a week. And so we're thrilled to have them. It's a big honor for us and a really big honor for them. So I hope when you see them tomorrow at the parade, you let them know how much you appreciate them, and we appreciate this honor as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Brooke, for making the connection for me. Okay. I promise not to flub up the second one. A proclamation of the city of Bothell. Gary Hasler appreciation. Whereas Gary Hasler joined the city of Bothell as an assistant planner on July 2nd, 1990, when the city's population was 12,345, and whereas Gary has honorably served the citizens of Bothell for 28 years, during which time the population has increased to 45,260, and whereas Gary's dedication and professional growth resulted in a continuous series of promotions during his tenure, from assistant planner to interim community development director, and whereas Gary played a key role in the 1992 Canyon Park annexation, which roughly doubled the size of the city, and whereas Gary was instrumental in obtaining Bothell status as a certified local government for historic preservation, and whereas Gary was a major contributor to development of the first Imagine Bothell Comprehensive Plan in 1994 under the State Growth Management Act, and whereas Gary has led or assisted in at least two major rewrites of the Bothell Municipal Code, including updates to the critical area ordinances, the sign code, and the city's first wireless communications regulations, and whereas Gary provided outstanding leadership for the Community Development Department as interim director during a time of transition and uncertainty, and whereas Gary has become a true friend to his many coworkers and the citizens of Bothell, and whereas we celebrate Gary's invaluable contributions of service and friendship, and whereas we wish Gary all the best as he retires from the city and enjoys the next chapter of his life. Now therefore I, Davina Dewar, Deputy Mayor of the city of Bothell, do hereby proclaim the city of Bothell's appreciation to Gary Hasler for his many contributions to the city of Bothell and our greater community."
Would you like to say something? Sure. Thank you very much. I was not expecting this. But despite that, I'll try to keep it brief. I did come to the city when the population was just 12,345, and it's really easy to remember because it's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. So, and now as the deputy mayor said, we're over 45,000. It's been super exciting to be part of this. I can't wait to see how downtown finishes and ends up. And even though my partner Cheryl and I are going to be retiring to England in about, just over a year, we'll be coming back, and I can't wait to see everything that everyone here has done. I'd like to especially say thank you very much to all my friends and colleagues here who absolutely mean the world to me. Thank you.
Gary, Mike and I just wanted to say thank you. I wanted to say thank you myself. I've been here for 18 months. You have been a true colleague, someone who taught me a lot about Bothell, especially the Community Development Department, and anytime someone steps up and is interim a director, it takes a toll, and we really appreciate when our internal staff are willing to do that. Usually calls for double duty, sometimes even triple duty, but I really appreciate that in a time when we needed you and I needed you, you were willing to do that and help us through that transition, teach me the things that I needed to learn, and help us find a new community development director and be part of that process, and then help get the staff ready for that. You got us ready, got the staff ready, and you're sending us off, or growing up, and you're sending us off so we can be successful. It's been just a pure pleasure for me. You will be very missed.
So Gary thinks he's sitting in for me tonight. So you're done after this, Gary. You get to go home. That's probably, that's probably the best part of the whole evening. So when we were putting together the proclamation, Bruce Blackburn shared a story with me that I thought would be fun to share with the rest of you. First of all, Bruce is, he's the only one in the department who's been here longer than Gary, so that should tell you something right there.
More than anybody.
So when Gary's working on the city's first wireless ordinance, they were down to the deadline. They had to get this, the council had to adopt by a certain date, and the hearing, the last meeting, was on that date. So they were working well into the night to get that finished, and Gary was working on that, and at a certain time, all of the computers in City Hall shut down. So rather than pack up and just call it quits, they moved to a council member's house, and Gary finished typing as they were all deliberating at the council member's house and finished it up around 2:00 a.m. the next morning. So that's just an indication of Gary's dedication to the city of Bothell and how things have progressed and how we do things here, I hope. So Gary led the department for several months, and he's been a wealth of knowledge and invaluable resource to me, and also a guide through these first few months, and Gary, I really appreciate that. I could not have asked for a better person to help me through this, this transition. I know from talking to staff, he's well-liked, respected, and trusted, and it didn't take me too long to figure that out for myself as well. You'll definitely be missed, but we have a few more weeks to squeeze every last drop of knowledge out of you that we can, and we will do that. So at the end of July, on behalf of the staff, we will wish you a fond farewell and look forward to hearing about all of your next adventures. So thank you from the bottom of our hearts. Thank you.
And now we'll have a presentation from King County Metro on Metro Northeast Side Mobility Project. Presenting is Grace Carlson of King County Transit.
Gary, I'd like to offer my congratulations to you. Where did he go? Did he leave? Oh, there he is. Also, there was a, I think, a previous community development director that retired a few years back, and he's on our mobility board for this project. So you can take the community development director out of City Hall, but you can't take the love of community away. So all the best to you. Good evening. Thank you so much for inviting me, and it's a pleasure for me to be here with you all to talk about the Northeast Side Mobility Project. As I mentioned, we have one of your former community development staff members that's serving in an advisory capacity to this project, and it's great having him on board. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you this story, and it's a three-part story. The first part, I'm gonna tell you about this project, why, why we're doing the project, what goals and objectives, and what it means for the constituents in the city of Bothell. The second part is how, how previous projects that were studied in this area have informed where we are today and where we hope to be going by September 2019, when the project is ready to be implemented. And the third part is some area projects that have an impact or relate to this project. So the Northeast Mobility Project, let's see, where's my... Project goals are pretty simple. I was looking at the study area map. I do have copies for the council members at their dais, and there's a few extra copies for the public if you want to follow along, but of the routes that we're studying in the northeast side, the two main ones that, that influence the Bothell area is the all-day Route 238 that goes from Kirkland Transit Center up to the University of Bothell, and the peak-only route, the 243. And if you don't know much about those routes, I can tell you that during the week, they really only run on 30-minute frequencies, and on weekends, it's less frequent than that, and for the peak route, it doesn't, it doesn't run on the weekends at all. So you can look, just looking at Bothell in the study area, and realize that there is room for improvement, whether it's extending the span of service, or increasing frequency, or giving folks like the riders who use the 238 a more direct and convenient and quick accessible way to get from Kirkland to the University of Washington at Bothell. There's a lot of room for improvement. Also, many of you participated over the last several years in helping Metro to create our long-range vision, Metro connects, which has a 2025 and a 2040 horizon, and as we're looking at these routes on the northeast side, we're looking at where we would be able for the first time, since the plan was created and developed in collaboration with community, to actually start to make some investments in this area that would start to move us towards that 2025 and ultimately 2040 vision for greater frequency for taxpayers throughout the area. And then we're also doing this in, simultaneously looking at fixed routes, but we're also looking at alternative mobility services, and many, we have many mobility services that are already available in this area through community connections, such as community vans and shared van pools and that type of thing, that help with the first and last mile. So while we're trying to make sure that we're utilizing our corridors as optimally, as effectively as we can, we're also cognizant of the fact that for many people, it's getting access to the transit. That's the problem. It's not the transit itself. So we need to be looking at first mile, the corridors and the activity centers that people are traveling to, as well as the last mile. So that was, that's the first part of my story, which is, you know, what we're, what we're doing today. We just finished our first phase of outreach. So we did community conversations at the University of Washington at Bothell, at Kingsgate Library, at Kirkland Library. We did tabling events at farmers markets throughout the area, and we've, and we had over 1,000 people respond to a survey telling us how the system is working or not working well for them at this time. So we're in the process now of trying to translate all that qualitative and quantitative data into something meaningful that will help guide our, our future direction. This project actually kind of was a spinoff of a project that we did in partnership with Sound Transit last year, where we looked at service that was going across SR 520, across the lake, some of it, some service was going up into the U-Dub Link Light Rail area, but the majority of it was traveling down into downtown Seattle and further point south. And we were looking at realizing that there's going to be a tremendous amount of capital construction that's going to be going on in the downtown Seattle area. We wanted to make sure that eastside riders had the most reliable, frequent, dependable service that we could make available, and so we talked to folks last year about the possibility of having some of that cross-lake bus traffic be reoriented to the University of Washington Link Light Rail Station. And we, while we heard from many people that they, many folks, thousands of people a day use that connection right now, but there was, and while there was people that supported it, there was also some concerns about safety and access and having urban streets more optimally oriented for transit traffic. So we took a step back from last year's project, and we heard those concerns, and we've got two capital projects that are going on right now with regard to, to the Northeast Side Project. One is working with University of Washington, SDOT, and Sound Transit to make sure that the link light rail transfer environment, the bus-to-rail integration, is smooth and welcoming and inviting and safe, and that people feel like it's a quicker way for them to get to their ultimate destination than having the buses run on surface streets and get caught up in congestion. But we're also partnering with SDOT in downtown Seattle streets to add transit improvements that will help buses keep, keep moving on a more reliable schedule. So, as I said, the study area certainly includes Bothell, but also Kenmore, Kirkland, Redmond, and Woodinville, and we have a variety of routes, and we're also still in partnership with Sound Transit, looking at the Sound Transit Express 540 in this study. This tells you a little bit about our timeline. As I mentioned, we just completed the first phase of outreach in July and August. We'll be putting together some preliminary concepts and coming back and talking to small groups throughout this area about what aspects and what features of each potential concept is most favorably received by the public, and then we'll be coming back in late September, early October, to do a final phase of outreach with a couple of final concepts to put before the public for their recommendations. Then, if all goes according to plan, sometime after the first of the year, the proposal will go into an ordinance package that will go before the King County Council to be reviewed and approved in April/May timeframe, and then, as I said, implemented in September 2019. So there are some conditions, this is the third part of my story. There are some external conditions of note that I need to include in my overview of this project. WashDOT let us know earlier this year that as part of their plan for the final phase of construction on SR 520 the rest of the west, that they would be closing the Montlake Freeway stations, which are on the west end of 520, just before 520 merges into I-5. That is for safety reasons, and also, if you've seen any of their plans, they're looking at putting a lid in that area, and that ultimately there will be bus stops stationed at that lid, but that's about five or six years away. Between the traffic that Metro carries across the lake and Sound Transit, we have about 700 riders that board in a light at that station today. That's their access to the university district, and so we're working with Sound Transit, and we're working with WashDOT, and we're working within our own budget constraints to come up with some alternatives that will help carry the, our passengers to the U District between March, when, March of 2019, when WashDOT plans to close those stops, and September of 2019, when we can implement the project. Another external condition of note is that in March of 2019, or at least as early as March of 2019, the joint operations for the downtown transit tunnel will come to an end. So the transit tunnel in downtown Seattle will only be accessible to light rail vehicles. So buses will have to come up to the surface streets. And while I mentioned the capital improvements that we're partnering with SDOT on and Sound Transit in the downtown street and pathways, it's, it's still going to be a lot of congestion, and, you know, we are worried about the frequency and reliability when the buses come out of the tunnel. And finally, I mentioned that we're partnering with University of Washington, SDOT, Sound Transit, to improve the capital environment at Montlake Triangle. That's the transfer environment at University of Washington, and we're on track to have all of those capital improvements in place about the same time as the project would be implemented next September. So I've given you a lot of information to digest, and I'm sorry I rattled through it quickly, but I know people have got holiday plans they want to get to, so I didn't want to take up too much time, but I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Does anyone have any questions? I guess you covered it well enough.
Okay, thank you so much, and happy Fourth to everyone.
Thanks so much for your presentation.
Yep.
Okay. Next, we'll be having a staff briefing on the Americans with Disabilities Act Transition Plan by Rita Hu.
My name is Rita Hu, senior capital project engineer with Public Works Department. Tonight, I'm going to talk about Americans with Disabilities Act ADA and ADA Transition Plan. Sorry. Sorry. What is the ADA? ADA is a law that was enacted by the U.S. Congress in 1990. It is a very comprehensive civil rights law that prohibits discrimination against people with disability. So the ADA is divided into five sections. Title I covers employment. Title II describes public services. Title III talks about public accommodation. Title IV and Title V apply to telecommunications and miscellaneous provisions. Our focus here is the Title II of the ADA. Title II of the ADA specifically talks about public services. It applies to the states and local governments. Title II of the ADA says that the public agency shall have a designated ADA coordinator who will be responsible for coordinating the compliance of the ADA requirement. Title II of the ADA also say that the public agency shall develop a grievance procedure. It shall review its policies, programs, services, and facility within the public railway. If a public agency has more than 50 employees, it has to have an ADA transition plan. So what is an ADA transition plan? ADA transition plan is an action plan. At the minimum, an ADA transition plan should identify the physical barrier in the public entity's facility, such as the barriers in the curbines and sidewalks. Those barriers limit the accessibility of the public agency's programs or activities to the individuals with disabilities. An ADA transition plan shall describe the method that the public agency is going to take to make the facility accessible, and also it should provide an action plan, a detailed plan on how the public agency to achieve ADA compliance. An ADA transition plan is a living document. It has to be reviewed and updated periodically. So how is Basel going to be compliant with the ADA requirements? Here's what we did. In 2015, Public Works Department initiated a self-evaluation for curbines and sidewalks. Today, we have reviewed over 1,000 curbines and more than 120 miles of the existing and missing sidewalks. We developed a ranking system to prioritize barriers, and we also developed an implementation plan based on the current available fund, such as the funding for the sidewalk program, any overlay program, the grants, as well as safe street levy. Most importantly, we developed a first draft of the ADA transition plan per Title II of the ADA. The draft of the ADA transition plan we put together is not quite yet a city-wide ADA transition plan. It is exclusively focused on the curbines and sidewalks. However, it does cover the general processes of the ADA requirements. So our draft ADA transition plan has the following elements. Destination of the ADA coordinator for the city of Basel. The grievance procedure. A public notice about the ADA requirements and the processes. The self-evaluation we have done for the curban and sidewalks today. The inventory findings based on the self-evaluation we have performed, and the prioritization process to prioritize the ADA deficiency. Implementation plans. The design standards for the curbines and sidewalk, and also how we plan on monitor and updating the plans. Public involvement. Title II of ADA also require public agency to engage public, to make comments on our ADA transition plan. So we have posted our draft of the ADA transition plan on the city of Basel's website, and we are going to publish a public comment period notice in the newspaper, a 45-day comment period starting July 15, 2018, and we are going to post a public comment period notice on the city of Basel's social media, too. And lastly, we will reach out to the local advocacy groups for their inspection on our ADA transition plan. Next steps. After the public comment period, we will provide responses to the public comments and incorporate the public comments into our draft of the ADA transition plan. Then we will prepare a resolution for council's adoption of the final draft of the ADA transition plan. In conclusions. According to the Title II of the ADA, Basel must have an ADA transition plan. A draft of the ADA transition plan has been developed, and now is ready for public inspection. In November, we will ask council to consider approval of the final draft of the ADA transition plan. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Does anyone have any questions? I have one, actually. I'm assuming that this is an update to our current transition plan.
We don't have. This is our first transition.
This is our first?
Yes.
Oh, okay. That's good to know. Well, thank you so much for the information. Do you, oh, you do, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Councilmember Olson.
Does the city look into the Pro-WAG standards at all?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so that's kind of a consideration for our right-of-way.
The railway.
Just the, the difference.
Yes, we have to, we have to perform the self-evaluation for all the facility within the public railways.
Okay. So the, I think I'm trying to ask the difference between the ADA and the Pro-WAG, kind of, it's, I think they treat a little differently, the public right-of-ways, kind of what's along the streets and right sidewalks and everything.
I...
I know, it's, it's okay. We can, I'll check in with, with.
Okay. I am happy to do some more research.
Okay, good. We can talk later.
Yes.
Moving on to council committee reports. Does anyone have a council committee report? Councilmember McAuliffe.
Thank you.
Thank you. There's just a couple of things I want to address tonight. And first of all, I want to thank Chief Cummings and Jennifer Phillips and all of our people who are involved in getting $100,000 for a Navigator program. You know, this is essential to the safety of our people in Bothell for mental health and for their welfare. So I want to thank all of you for really coming forward with Councilmember Rod Demagowski and making this happen. So we really appreciate that. And then I have to recognize Lee Henderson, fellow Lexus, the flower lady for planting the planters on Main Street, because she absolutely wanted to have them ready for the Fourth of July. And another point of interest, I think, is that we all need to vote on the Reader's Digest. The nicest place in America is Bothell. And we are number eight of 10. So if everybody votes, we might be number one, right? So that's really important as well. And then I want to say also, one more here. And that is, well, that one I can't mention yet. I don't think so. Wait. Oh. Nick, can I do it? Okay. So I want to also recognize that our city manager has brought Nick Stoop into our Park and Recreation Deputy Director. And he's been with the department for 18 years. He's well-respected. And we're very excited to have him as the Park Recreation Deputy Director. So, good choice. Director, did I say director? I think I said director. All right. That's my report.
Thank you. All good news. Councilmember Zornz.
This last week, I had a chance to go to Association of Washington Cities in Yakima. And I would just like to encourage everyone on council, if you haven't done it, go do it. Some of the, I sat in classes every single day, took copious notes. Some of the things that were interesting to find was how other communities are effectively dealing with homelessness and mental health and how the police interacts with homelessness and mental health. Ten traits, which I thought was going to be a snoozer of a class, was very interesting on Ten Traits for Effective Council Members. And then Small Town Ideas for Building Community, also good. I mean, and then, and one workshop I found especially interesting is from, and I've told our city manager about it, is the city of Dupont has a program where they use a machine called a Sidewalk Sucker. And you can Google it. Be very careful that, I would also put the city of Dupont with that so you don't go down some other area. They have found a way to save 85% to 90% of their trees and repair sidewalks and go from a $15 million job to a $2.5 million job. It's pretty substantial. So I was very excited. Any rate, I will, you know, be filling your ear later about that. But good, good, interesting time, exhausting, but well worth the time. So y'all should do it if you haven't done it.
Thank you. It sounds great. I'm going to be asking you about some of those items. So I have a couple of brief committee reports. On June 21st, the King County Delegates to the Transportation Policy Board met to approve the countywide grant package and forward it to the full Transportation Policy Board. And two Bothell projects made the cut. So I thought I'd mention the pavement overlay of portions of the Juanita-Woodenville Drive project. It was, the full project wasn't granted because they were trying to do, make it kind of even across King County. So we didn't get all of it, but we got a good portion of it. And then the Bothell Way Northeast widening was also part of the package. So that's really good news for Bothell. And then the WashDOT Executive Advisory Group met on June 4th. I don't have the correct date. I think it's the 25th. And we talked about the Eastside Rail Corridor and how there are interim trails from Gincolom Park to Newcastle Beach Park and from across Kirkland Corridor to 120th that are now open. And we kind of got an update on all the other pieces and parts and where they're at in the design process. And then, more pertinent to us, we got an update on the latest funding options for the I-405 North Phase 1 widening and improvements between 522 and 527. Those improvements include extending a second lane, a toll lane, between 522 and 527, rebuilding the SR 522 interchange and adding direct access ramps and building partial direct access ramps in a bus rapid transit station at 522. Currently, the engineering is fully funded at $20 million for fiscal years 17 through 19 and 19 through 21. Remaining funding is needed for the right-of-way acquisition. That's about $20 million. And construction is estimated to be $450 million. Currently, the only funding that they've potentially identified is the bonding of the 405 and 167 tolls. And the reason they're, I think, trying to package it that way is there are improvements on 167 as well that need to be accomplished. And bonding requires a 60% vote. So I'm guessing, they didn't say this, but I'm guessing it's in order to try to get more legislators that will vote for the package. So in order for this to happen, the bonding, several things have to occur in the legislature. So toll authorization for 405 on the south section between Renton and Bellevue has to occur, as well as toll authorization for SR 167. Currently, it's authorized, but it expires on June 30th in 2019. And then it needs to be extended into Pierce County. The legislature also needs to define I-405 and SR 167 as a corridor. And then they have to, again, it's a 60% vote for the bond. And then appropriation and legislative direction for the projects. So quite a few steps in there, but progress nevertheless. So I thought I'd mention to everyone kind of where we're at with that. And that is all I have for council committee reports. So now we're moving on to visitor comments. Do we have any? Oh, okay. So with that, we will be going into executive session for an hour on potential litigation pursuant to RCW 42.30.1101I.
Deputy Mayor?
Yes.
Could we actually change it to 30 minutes and then extend if needed?
Sure. Okay. So we will be back at, let's see, 7:05? Okay.